Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting and committee of the whole meeting. I proudly call the city council meeting to order and ask our clerk to please take the roll call.
Bowring?
Here.
Bruno?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Katsarag?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Pashke?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
Wonderful. We have a full house tonight. I'd like to invite our dear friend Nate Landers to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Since you made eye contact.
It's that seat. I could've told you that. I've heard it a lot already.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, item three, public hearings, special items and presentations. Item 3A is to proclaim February 2024 as Black History Month in the City of Geneva. Mr. Marx makes the motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Person Pashke. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Item 3B, consider mayor's appointment of Juliette Nickel to the Strategic Plan Advisory Alder Person Katsarag makes the motion. Alder Person Bowring makes the second. Ben, do you want to say anything about Juliette? I know she was unanimously recommended by the folks at SPAC.
Just, we're looking forward to having her joining us. The student position has been vacant for a few meetings now, and she will be a good addition to the group.
Fantastic. All in favor of the recommendation to sew a point, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item 3C, the Geneva Library has a presentation tonight, folks, on the One Book, One Community Program. We have some very special guests with us this evening from the library board. Lauren, are you leading this?
That's me.
Oh, fantastic. Lauren's back.
And we have some wonderful helpers to get you all some presents this evening. Well, it is a pleasure to be back with you all. I think this is year three that I get to come and hang out with you all and tell you about this year's One Book, One Community Program at the library. We are handing out both our children and family book selection and our adult book selection. You all get to take one of those home with you tonight, courtesy of our Friends of the Library organization. We are very excited to have their support. But as I said, this is our third annual One Book, One Community event. This year, we have selected two books that will explore how many distinct individuals can come together, create a supportive community that celebrates everyone's dreams and aspirations. We're going to have a lot of really fun programming as well, so you have a program guide tucked into the front cover of the adult book, which is the one that is pink in color. Our adult book selection this year is "You Are Here" by Karen Lynn Greenberg. She is a debut novelist, but an award-winning short story author. Her debut novel encourages us to reach out to our neighbors and to appreciate what each of us contributes to a supportive and welcoming community. It's really genuine and thoughtful, very heartwarming. It celebrates the strength in community that celebrates the uniqueness of every single person. She will join us in person at the library. Karen Lynn Greenberg will be there on March 10th at 1:30. That one is definitely featured in your program guide. Our book selection for children and families is called "In the Neighborhood." This is by Rosio Bonilla. She is a Spanish author, lives in Barcelona, so unfortunately will not be coming to visit us at the library this year. But she has a perfect picture book for family read-alouds. It has a whimsical cast of really wonderful and unique characters, and they're all just a little bit nervous about sharing who they truly are with their neighbors. But then, of course, disaster strikes. The internet goes out, and everyone has to come together, and they discover that perhaps their uniqueness is what makes their community strong. It has wonderful humor. The illustrations in particular, don't miss the humor in the illustrations. It has heart, and Geneva's children and their grownups will have a wonderful story that will help them grow their self-confidence and be encouraged to celebrate one another and all of the things that they bring to their community. We will celebrate with kids and families on Saturday, March 9th. So over the course of our month-long event series, you will flip through here and see there are quite a few programming and event opportunities. We're also featuring some larger community events, so we're very excited to celebrate everything Geneva has to offer during this upcoming month. We'll be giving away nearly 1,000 books starting Saturday, February 10th. That is courtesy of our Friends of the Library organization. So stop by the library. Recommend that all of your friends, family, stop by the library and grab their copy of the book. And then, as I said, so many programs listed in here. Those are sponsored by our Library Foundation. Without these two groups, we could not do nearly the level of wonderful community programming that we're able to accomplish in this upcoming month. So I truly hope you enjoy this year's selections, and I hope we get to see you quite a lot at the library over the next month or so.
Well, Ms. Maxwell, I believe I speak on behalf of the entire council. Your lack of passion is extraordinary. You bring such excitement and joy to this program. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
I've got to ask you a question. Without giving away the book, you've read it.
I have.
Once or twice?
One and a half times.
One and a half times.
I'm still on my second read-through for the year, yes.
There's a topic about a shopping mall.
Yes.
In the book. Is that what strikes you as most interesting, or is it the character development?
Personally, I find this a very character-driven story.
Okay.
So what connects all of these characters is that they have some sort of interaction with their local shopping mall.
Is that...
That's where they all know each other from. However, that is not what makes them into a community. What makes them into a community is their shared lived experiences in that place. So I think this is a much more character-driven book than we've had in the past.
And as a professional reader, why do you read it twice?
I read it once to make sure it is a wonderful, lovely book. I read it last summer as we were selecting everything, but that was kind of the broad read, to make sure everything that we want out of this book exists in the book. Now, as we prepare for our month of programming, I am in the midst of reading for the details.
Wow. Do you mark the book accordingly? Do you have post-it notes? Are you...
I am an ebook reader, so I do digital annotations, yes.
And you will, you and your team, will help folks who have ebooks learn how to download those books, which I still have to do.
Most definitely.
Yes.
There is, in fact, a lovely QR code in your program guide that you can use to get to those ebooks and e-audiobooks.
What if you just read it and told me what it was about? Could we do that as well?
I could do that, but where would be the fun?
That's, thanks for that answer. Questions or comments from Ms. Maxwell?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you. I love the program. I think it's an awesome thing that you do for our community, and I loved, was it just last year, The Octopus? I don't remember the title, but...
Remarkably Bright Creatures?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
I loved that book, and I look forward to coming to these programs and participating. So thank you very much.
Thank you. It's truly my favorite thing that I get to do all year, so I'm glad you enjoy it, too.
Anyone else? We look forward to seeing you on the 7th, the 9th, and the 10th.
And many other days in between, I hope.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, item 3D is the public hearing on the fiscal year 2025 City of Geneva budget. I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing for that purpose and that purpose alone. Motion by Marx, seconded by Bowring. All in favor of opening the public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is open, and this hearing is for anyone joining us this evening with questions and/or comments about the fiscal year 2025 City of Geneva budget. Seeing none, sensing none, expecting none, is there a motion to close the hearing on the fiscal year 2025 budget? Motion by Alder Person Mayor, seconded by Alder Person Pashke. All in favor of closing the hearing on the fiscal year 2025 budget, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The hearing is closed, folks. We jump to item four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council. All those items can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Alder Person Katsarag makes the motion. Seconded by Alder Person Mayor. Do you want me to make that statement now or after the fact? I will be voting on the omnibus agenda. I will kindly ask the city clerk to cast my aye vote for item F, which is the, forgive me, the ordinance authorizing the provision of issuance not to exceed $30 million in general obligating bonds for the City of Geneva Electric Works. Without objection, Clerk Kellick, please take the roll.
Katsarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
And...
Aye, for item F.
Yes.
Thank you. Item eight, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
The bills total $2,858,899.33. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's city council packet on the city website.
Alder Person Bruno makes a motion to pay the bills as presented, which are available on the city's website and each, and in each city council member's packet. Is there a second?
Second.
Alder Person Bowring gets the second. Clerk Kellick, whenever you're ready, please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Katsarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
The city bills have been approved by this council with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay
votes, and zero absent. We jump to item 10, presentation of ordinances and resolutions. Item 10A, consider resolution number 2024-14 approving use of public right-of-ways and city services and I dot resolutions 2024-15, 2024-16, 2024-17, 2024-18 for, surprise, 2024 city festivals and certain large-scale events. Please repeat the motion. Alder Person Bowring with the motion, seconded by Alder Person Mayor. Any questions or comments? Ms. Dawkins, all yours.
Just briefly, so annually, the city council reviews the list of reoccurring event dates and authorizes the city administrator to approve the details of the special event application in keeping with prior approval provisions. Special event liquor licenses and new event proposals would still require city council review and approval as applicable. So the resolution for your consideration tonight includes authorizing the use of public rights-of-ways and city services, and then also includes, as the mayor indicated, the I dot required resolutions needed for closures of state highways. I would note that resolution 2024-16, there is an amendment to what's in the packet. It had the wrong date up in the heading, so that will be corrected once we execute it, but I wanted to make sure you were aware of that before you do vote. If you have any additional questions, we do have Director Timoshenko with, Timoshenko with us in the audience.
Questions for the city administrator or our economic development director? Alder Person Katsarag?
Just one. As we're approving this, is there any expected significant changes to any of our festivals or large-scale events that we're aware of at this point?
Nope, not at this point, but certainly if anything comes up, we'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? On item 10A, we have a motion by Bowring, a second by Mayor. Because this includes right-of-ways, let's go for a roll call vote, please.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Katsarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Katsarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Katsarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
With a vote of 10 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 absent, item 10E has been approved by this council. Item 10F is to consider resolution 2024-23 authorizing execution of the Third Amendment to Master Purchase and Sale Agreement between Union Pacific Railroad Company and the City of Geneva. Is there a motion to put this on the floor?
So moved.
Marx with the motion, Bruno with the second, Dawkins with the summary.
Okay, so during the land acquisition phase of the East State Street reconstruction project, one parcel was identified as two independent parcels. Three parcels have changed ownership, and another parcel required a plat revision. Each of these changes require fresh appraisals and negotiations per the I dot land acquisition practices. For your consideration this evening is change order number three and the amount of $55,110 to the Professional Engineering Agreement with Bollinger Lock &amp; Associates to support these additions. And then with us this evening, if you have additional questions, is Director Babica.
Questions for Director Babica from the dais. A voice vote is sufficient on item 10C. The motion was offered by Bruno, seconded by Katsarag. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Item 10C has passed with 10 affirmative votes, 0 nay votes, and 0 absent. Item 10D, consider resolution 2024-21 authorizing the execution of change order number one with Martim Construction for Route 25 Water Main Project increasing the overall contract to the not-to-exceed amount of $1,662,958.85. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Bowring with the motion, Katsarag with the second, Dawkins with the summary.
Okay, so the majority of the underground construction has been completed for the replacement of the water main on North Bennett Street. However, several unforeseen and unknown issues required resolution as the project progressed. A detailed explanation of those issues was included in this evening's packet. This additional work completed by Martim Construction has resulted in the change order. In addition, we have also asked for additional funding to expand the scope of the project to replace the remaining sidewalk shared path along Route 25. And again, if you have any questions, we do have Director Babica with us this evening.
Questions for Director Babica. If not, voice vote is sufficient on item 10D. The motion made by Bowring, seconded by Pashke. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Please say nay. The motion passes with 10 affirmative votes, 0 nay votes, and 0 absent. Item 10E, which will require a roll call vote, is to consider resolution 2024-22 waiving competitive bidding and awarding purchase of eight concrete underground switch bolts to Utility Concrete Products in the amount of $27,794. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Marx with the motion, Bruno with the second, Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so eight underground concrete switch bolts are required for the old Kirk Road Underground Construction Project. The City of Geneva has adopted the concrete vault specifications from Naperville, which are produced by Utility Concrete Products, and they have, Utility Concrete Products will extend to Geneva the same cost that Naperville has awarded for the transformer and switchgear vaults, which are competitively bid. So we request that the competitive bidding be waived and the purchase be awarded to Utility Concrete Products. And with us this evening, we have Superintendent Holton, who will be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
If there's any questions from the dais for the superintendent, Mr. Holton, now is your chance. Seeing none and sensing none, Clerk Kellick, please take the roll.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Katsarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Unanimous vote, ladies and gentlemen. 10 votes in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 absent to approve the fiscal year 2025 budget. That vote reflects our faith and trust and appreciation for you and your team, so thank you very much. Item 11, public comment. Anyone joining us this evening who wishes to address the city council, bring up any matter, share any thoughts, you're welcome to do so at this time. Please note that we will not be engaging you in discussion. This is your chance to speak, our chance to listen. So with that caveat, who's interested? New business from the council. Alder Person Kilburg?
New business. Those that have not had an opportunity, there was a two-or-three-minute segment on Fox 32 this morning promoting Geneva, and we had a resident that spoke favorably about our community, as well as the mayor, had an opportunity to highlight some of the attractions around our community that makes it a popular destination. So if you hadn't had the opportunity to see it, it... Does he have a clip of it? Oh.
It's on YouTube.
It's on YouTube, is it? Okay, so it's out there.
Mr. Furnish spoke rather passionately about the community, which was lovely. Anyone else? New business. Nothing? How about a motion to adjourn this stimulating in momentarily foggy council meeting? Katsarag makes the motion. All in favor of adjourning, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, folks. We'll take just a moment to allow Alder Person Ruby to take the chair for the Committee of the Whole.
I'm going to get the show on the road. With authority. All right, good evening. Tonight is Monday, February 5th. Welcome to our Committee of the Whole meeting. My name is Alder Person Becky Ruby. I serve the third board with the esteemed Dean Kilburg. Tonight, we will start off our meeting with, let's see, we just did our call to order. All right. Everyone is here. Thank you. Sorry, I don't have my Gigi. All right, item to end the agenda, approve Committee of the Whole minutes from January 16th, 2024, and special Committee of the Whole minutes from January 22nd, 2024. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, so motion by Bruno, second by Marx. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you. All right, on to item 3, 3A, items of business. Consider draft resolution authorizing surplus declaration and disposal or sale of certain property. I'm so specific.
Second.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? On item 10A, we have a motion by Bowring, a second by Mayor. Because this includes right-of-ways, let's go for a roll call vote, please.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Katsarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
With a vote of 10 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 absent, item 10E, which will require a roll call vote, is to consider resolution 2024-22 waiving competitive bidding and awarding purchase of eight concrete underground switch bolts to Utility Concrete Products in the amount of $27,794. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Marx with the motion, Bruno with the second, Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so eight underground concrete switch bolts are required for the old Kirk Road Underground Construction Project. The City of Geneva has adopted the concrete vault specifications from Naperville, which are produced by Utility Concrete Products, and they have, Utility Concrete Products will extend to Geneva the same cost that Naperville has awarded for the transformer and switchgear vaults, which are competitively bid. So we request that the competitive bidding be waived and the purchase be awarded to Utility Concrete Products. And with us this evening, we have Superintendent Holton, who will be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
If there's any questions from the dais for the superintendent, Mr. Holton, now is your chance. Seeing none and sensing none, Clerk Kellick, please take the roll.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Katsarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With 10 votes in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 absent, item 10F has been approved by this city council. Item 10G, consider resolution number 2024-24 adopting the fiscal year 2025 City of Geneva budget.
So moved.
Marx with the motion, Katsarag with the second, Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so included in the packet was the recommended fiscal year 2025 budget for the City of Geneva, including all funds and supporting documentation. As you'll recall, the preliminary budget was noticed in the Suburban Chronicle on January 17th and was made available on the city's website for public viewing. I would like to take a moment to thank all of the senior management team and their staff, for, most of whom are sitting on the, I don't know if it's the bride's side or the groom's side of the aisle, but thank them for all of their efforts working together to put together a fiscally sound budget for your review and consideration. Through those efforts and the direction of the city council, the fiscal year 2025 budget is a balanced budget that represents the values stated in the strategic plan and best serves the citizens of this community. And then, any of us are here this evening and happy to answer any questions you might have. I would assume most of them are likely either fall to myself or Director Cruz, but the I would assume most of them are likely either fall to myself or Director Cruz, but the floor is yours.
The floor is open for questions from the dais, for any member of the senior management team. With appreciation and thanks to our professional staff. Clerk Kellick, kindly take the role.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Unanimous vote, ladies and gentlemen. Ten votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero absent to approve the fiscal year 2025 budget. That vote reflects our faith and trust and appreciation for you and your team, so thank you very much. Item 11, public comment. Anyone joining us this evening who wishes to address the city council, bring up any matter, share any thoughts, you're welcome to do so at this time. Please note that we will not be engaging you in discussion, this is your chance to speak, our chance to listen. So with that caveat, who's interested? New business from the council, Alderperson Kilburg.
New business, uh, those that have not had an opportunity, there was a, uh, a two or three minute segment on Fox 32 this morning promoting Geneva, and, uh, we had a resident that spoke favorably about our community, as well as the mayor, uh, had an opportunity to, uh, to highlight some of, uh, the attractions around our community that makes it a popular destination, so. If you hadn't had the opportunity to see it, it, uh, uh, did you have a clip of it? Oh.
It's on YouTube.
It's on YouTube, is it? Okay, so it's out there.
Uh, Mr. Furnish spoke rather passionately about the community, which was lovely. Anyone else, new business? Nothing? How about a, a motion to adjourn this stimulating in momentarily foggy council meeting? Kassarag makes the motion. All in favor of adjourned, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, folks, we'll take just a moment to allow Alderperson Ruby to take the chair for the Committee of the Whole.
I'm gonna get the show on the road. With authority. All right, good evening, tonight is, um, Monday, February 5th, welcome to our Committee of the Whole meeting. My name is Alderperson Becky Ruby, I serve the Third Board with the esteemed Dean Kilburg. Tonight, we will start off our meeting with, let's see, we just did our call to order. All right. Everyone is here, thank you. Sorry, I don't have my Gigi. All right, item to end the agenda, approve Committee of the Whole minutes from January 16th, 2024, and special Committee of the Whole minutes from January 22nd, 2024. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, so, motion by Bruno, second by Marx. And all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you. All right, on to item three, 3A, items of business. Consider draft resolution authorizing surplus declaration and disposal or sale of certain property. So specific. Kassarag and Pashke? And Stephanie, do you have a summary?
So the resolution for your consideration declares surplus items and vehicles that are no longer needed, are obsolete or broken. Uh, the items from finance and electric will be disclosed appropriately, and the police vehicles will be sold and proceeds deposited into the capital equipment fund. Uh, if you have any additional questions, I'm sure Director Cruz would be happy to answer those for you.
Any questions from the dais? Roll call vote? Oh, I'm sorry, um. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so passes unanimously. All right, item 3B, consider draft resolution authorizing execution of market license agreement between the City of Geneva and Bensidoun, USA for the 2024-25 seasons. And a second? Okay.
So Bensidoun, USA operates the French market at Fourth Street between Crescent and South, which is the Siegel Public Parking Lot. For the upcoming and following seasons, a two-year license is proposed. The annual license fee of $800, which was increased in 2022, is proposed to stay the same to offset atypical costs associated with setup logistics. The French market is an economic driver for downtown retail on Sundays, offering visitors and residents a place to gather and access desirable goods. And if you have any additional questions, uh, again, Director Timoshenko will be happy to address those.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, item 3C, consider draft resolution authorizing execution of a farm lease for 245 acres at Prairie Green Preserve for the 2024 and 2025 crop seasons. Can I get a motion? Uh, let's give it to Swanson and Mayor.
Uh, so Pistic Farms, Maple Park, Illinois, has leased land at Prairie Green Preserve for farming purposes since 2004. Under Illinois law, the city can enter into a two-year lease, and Pistic Farms just finished a two-year lease agreement from 2022 and 2023 crop seasons. Lease proposals were publicly solicited for farming 245 acres, it was published in the Daily Herald and posted on the city's website. Pistic Farms was the only proposal received, and the bid for the 2024 and 25 seasons is cash rent lease rate of $270 per tillable acre for both seasons. Pistic Farms has used environmentally sound farming methods at Prairie Green Preserve. Over the years, they have developed a unique knowledge of Prairie Green site and maintain a compatible use relationship between the prairie and the wetland areas of the site and the farmed areas. Um, we do have with us Director DeGroot, but we also, also have, we also, also, we also have with us Dale Pitstick from Pitstick Farms, if you have any additional questions.
Any questions from the dais? I was waiting for you, Dean.
No, I, uh, I see the rates decreased, and that's reflects what's happening with, uh, leases, uh, across the Midwest because of commodity prices and input costs. My question is, it relates to, uh, uh, the, uh, the Prairie Green Preserve is, uh, we were, uh, dealing with a lot of flooding probably five years ago, and I guess I'd like to, uh, have your comments as it relates to, uh, the acreage. Obviously, we, you lost acreage when we had the flooding, correct? You might wanna come up, or... I guess he's going to come up.
You can come up as well. We did, we did have some flooding four years ago, and Rich, Rich and Dale might know more about it. We did lose some acreage, I wanna say it was around 20 acres we lost.
Yeah, so over the past three seasons, we haven't really lost any acreage. I'll throw anyone under the bus, but water coming off of St. Charles side was overflowing just to the west of the soccer fields, and because of that, it flowed all the way through all that land and just kinda sat in there, and now that that has been rectified, we haven't lost any acres.
So there was something done on the St. Charles side, then, to rectify it?
Correct.
And there were, there were issues that we had as well on the Geneva side, and I'm trying to think how long ago that was, is that six, seven years ago already? No, I'm talking about, okay, if you want... Okay. And again, this is sorta unrelated to what we're dealing with, with you, but obviously you have firsthand knowledge because you're out there on a regular basis and so on.
Like I told David the other day, that there are a couple tiles that need, small repairs need to be done at some point out there, too.
And what's your rotation as far as bean?
Uh, corn and soybeans.
Corn and soybeans, and then what is roughly the percentage of the 245 acres, then, that would be corn and soybeans?
Uh, it's one crop each, each season.
So in other words, you go all corn, all beans?
Correct.
No, that's, uh, that's good. We appreciate you, uh, managing, helping us manage that, uh, that large tract of property. It's not the most ideal because it's so chopped up and segmented that, uh, you're, uh, you're dealing with a lot, but, uh, obviously you got a crop last year with some extreme drought, and, uh, we're glad to see that, so.
Thank you.
Again, thanks for your, uh, your, uh, your contribution to Prairie Green.
Thank you. Anyone else?
How's Steve doing? Good?
Good, very good.
Okay, all in favor of 3C, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, item 3D, consider draft resolution authorizing execution of a five-year contract with Kramer Tree Specialist, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $2,393,837 for brush and leaf collection services. Can I get a motion? And a second? Marx and Bowring?
Okay, so the brush and leaf contract expired in December 2023. Staff has issued an RFP and posted notices on the city's website for combined brush and leaf services. The contract terms are for a five-year period for both brush and leaf, um, and the proposals were opened on January 8th, and the city received two. Kramer Tree Specialist was the lowest proposal for both, and the second proposal submitted a number for brush collection only. The overall cost for brush collection for the five-year term is $852,361, and leaf collection is $1,541,476, excuse me, $1,541,476. Um, staff is recommending Kramer Tree Specialist for the 2024 to 2029 brush and leaf collection program, and with us this evening, we have Superintendent Landers, who would be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Alderperson Bruno?
Uh, thank you, was our last contract for a five-year term also?
Yes.
It was. You know, leaf collection, um, you know, I get it from both sides, I mean, it's, it's serious money, and, uh, I think there's arguments to be made that, you know, we should be leaving those leaves, uh, in place, uh, but, uh, I know it's a very popular program, so I'm not gonna argue against it, but, gonna keep that in mind for the future. Thanks.
Go ahead, Captain Kilburg.
Could you give a little bit of an update on Kramer's equipment? And I know that they had issues with equipment this last fall, that delayed, uh, uh, their pickup during a pretty critical phase of the, the season. How many units did they actually have in operation, working Geneva, during the, uh, the peak of the leaf drop?
Sure, sure. Uh, so Kramer owns eight leaf vacuums.
Right.
Um, and most of the time, we have four here with an additional transfer truck. Uh, that's because they're doing leaf pickup for St. Charles and, and other places also, so we get 50% of their trucks for sure, and if, uh, they are not being used elsewhere, they come here.
How many contracts do they have for leaf, uh, leaf pickup? I, obviously, St. Charles and Geneva, I mean, if they got eight trucks?
Two, I know for sure, right?
Okay.
I do believe they pick up for the township one time also, for Geneva Township.
Okay, so they're very focused, uh, is that, you think that's an increase in equipment that they've had versus what they had five years ago when we extended this contract?
Absolutely, I know they've added, uh, they've added a couple more leaf vacuums, uh, to their, to their, uh, inventory, uh, to use, so.
And is there anybody else that does this type of, uh, service work?
If there is, they're not interested in doing it here.
Well, and, yeah.
I don't know, to, to be honest with you, I think Kramer is really the only game in town.
Yeah, the only one that's viable in our area, probably, and the ones that we've got a history with, and, and it seems like things were much better the last two or three years than they had been in the past. The thing about this is the season is so unpredictable, and you just don't know when all those leaves are gonna come down, and this year, they all came down in about 10 days.
Yes. And then we got snow on top of it, which nobody likes either, especially me.
Uh, the history of this for some of the, the members of the council that may not know it, we had the equipment, but it was a nightmare trying to maintain the equipment, and that we sold off our equipment, what is it, probably seven or eight years ago? Is it, or longer?
It's, it's been at least that long.
Longer, about 10, 10 years ago, because I was on the council, I think, when we gave out the first bid on this, and, uh, and, uh, again, it, it's a big number, but the thing is, is if you look at trying to find somebody else to do it, I think it'd be very difficult, and, uh, I don't know how they get employees to do that, because it's a dirty, pretty crummy job, and when you get about three inches of snow on top of it and it's all wet, uh, it doesn't get any better. So, again, I'll support this, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. I think we can... All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Voice vote, thank you. You guys, you all know. All right, unanimous? Okay, item 3E, consider draft resolution authorizing execution of a contract with Mark One Landscaping, in amount not to exceed $159,600 for 2024 landscape maintenance services. Can I get a motion? And a second? Pashke and Bowring?
Okay, so the landscape maintenance service contract includes mowing, weeding, trimming, and mulching of various sites throughout the city. Landscape maintenance service period runs from April to November. This is a one-year contract with an option for years two and three. Bids were posted on the city's website, opened on January 29th, with seven bids received. The bid tabulation was in the packet for your review. The lowest proposed bidder is Mark One Landscaping, and after checking references, the recommendation is to award the bid to Mark One Landscaping for the 2024 landscape maintenance service contract, and Nate is still the guy, uh, to ask all of your questions, too.
Alderperson Kassarag?
Uh, hey Nate, does this include the Bentry landscaping that we've been working on? No, heavy no, from Director Bencana. Is, uh, uh, am I allowed to ask how that will be proposed, or is that part of another program that already exists?
Defer to this man.
I sense something.
The Bentry Landscape Quarter is currently under review, uh, which was funded in the current fiscal year contract. They are to be, they are to be presenting in April, we're anticipating a overview and a landscape plan, which will then be used in the future assessment for the SSA, to ensure, well, of course, with city council approval, to ensure that there are funds available, and then, once those funds have been acquired through the next assessment, then we'll move into construction, so it's gonna be quite some time, because it's being funded through the SSA.
Quite some time, meaning next spring?
Well, the next year, it would be, the budget numbers would be included in the next assessment, which would be in October of '24, so the funds will be collected in '25, so that's when you would see construction, it would be sometime in '25. It's just the nature of the beast because of the SSA, that is, uh, unless, of course, there are funds available within the, um, uh, overall budget for the SSA to accommodate the first year's construction. So that has to be, I guess, determined as we move into the budget process for next year, which seems only fitting because we just finished this year's. Actually, that would be '26's fiscal budget, not '25.
Okay, I think I got it. Thank you.
We're working on it.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Alderperson Kilburg?
I get three.
Uh-oh, you, you only get two, sorry.
No, uh, we've talked about, uh, and it's been discussed at the council, and I know that we put out a communique as it relates to not mowing until the end of May. Are we looking at doing anything with some of the more expansive properties that are involved with this, uh, this contract? I'm talking specifically about the area east of the substation on East Side Drive, there's a track there, I believe, is that right? And, uh, also Geneva, uh, Geneva, uh, Generation, that facility has a huge parcel that, uh, you know, if, I'm, I'm thinking, we, you know, if we're gonna talk the talk, we maybe ought to walk the walk a little bit so that we can say that, you know, that we're making an effort, and if there are some residents that are embracing this idea, and again, I'm not advocating it necessarily, but I'm saying that, at least as the city's position on this is, is that, uh, we're not opposed to it, and that, uh, you know, we got an environmental element in our, in our strategic plan, I'm just saying, and it would save the city some money possibly with a couple of cuttings. And again, I don't think it'd be so unsightly if you looked at Geneva Generation, if you let it get to six inches, uh, uh, over the course of a, a month and a half, where you're gonna have grass growing. I'm just saying, uh, was that considered at all when we let this, or, uh, is it just a case of where we prefer it go away?
So, so if I may, just for a point of clarification, the council did talk about no mow May, and there was a decision made not to do anything about no mow May. So, we did not take action, we, there, that is not a, um, program that the city has opted to participate in, so all of our codes are still in place and all of that. If people choose not to mow, that's their choice, but they still would have to follow the, the height standards in the code.
I understand it was an educational effort for the community, I'm just saying, uh, here we have a situation where, uh, we could apply a practice that, uh, that people, at least some elements of the council seem to be in favor of. I don't know, maybe I missed the boat, but, uh, anyhow, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Alderperson Bowring?
Um, if I could just interject, so I was the one who initiated the discussion in tandem with, uh, Leave the Leaves. I think the conclusion, as I recall from that, was that while we did embrace Leave the Leaves, and I'd love to see that message amplified in future years, I appreciated that it did go up in the, on the website and out in the newsletter, um, I think the consensus was, based on research that a number of us did, that, that there really was not good evidence that no mow May is beneficial, given the particular nature of the relationship between the pollinators and the plants that we have here, it's something that originated in England and makes more sense given the ecosystem there. So I, at least, when we brought it up again, said, never mind. So, um, again, I, you know, people can do what they want in their yards within the codes that we have, um, but that was my takeaway from that, it's just that I'd add that since I was the one who brought it up.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
We'll put that one to bed.
Alderperson Marx?
Probably for Nate, but, you know, we bought that mower that, that was, you know, remote controlled, as, as, when do we use that and did this decrease the price? Cause I know like out by Fire Station 2, we use that a lot out there. I've seen it, yeah.
Yeah, it's at Fire Station 2, um, there's a pond on West Street there by Williamsburg School that we, that we use that on, we do that once, uh, we try to do that once a month, to keep those, uh, the bottom of that pond cut and hopefully get it dried out, so that our contractor can actually get in there and actually mow it on a, on a...
We do it once a month, so that...
Yeah, we usually...
They take care of everything else, except we go in there once a month.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all I wanted.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Are we good? All right, voice vote for item 3E, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right. Public comment, here we are again. Would anyone like to share any questions or comments with the council? Uh, item five on the agenda, new business. Is there any additional new business that you didn't have 20 minutes ago?
By May, though, since we have, um, Officer Perezy with us this evening. I don't have the, the title, I'm sorry. He was our big award winner for... the title, I'm sorry. He was our big award winner for Special Olympics. Do you want to come up and talk a little bit about how you were recognized? We're very proud of him and all of his efforts in the Police Department in supporting Special Olympics, so.
Or Sergeant Trudy and his email usage?
But all joking aside, no, I did appreciate him recognizing, you know, the efforts that I put in. But truth be told, you know, that award was, as nice as it was to receive, really, I believe and I feel, is more of a reflection on my department, the people I work with, and the effort that they put into this program, as well as our leadership in the department and their support of it. It's the support that we get from the city. And I've always wanted to thank our residents for their generosity at all of these events that we do. We are blessed to live and work in a good community with predominantly really good people. So that's been a blessing. And I was just fortunate enough to be in a place where I could kind of bring some of that together to, you know, help the athletes. It's been tremendous to have that opportunity. Special Olympics, for a lot of people don't understand, they think it's just an event in the summertime. It's all year long. These athletes go to practice weekly. It's an outlet for those with intellectual disabilities to compete and experience the joy of friendship and competition that they wouldn't otherwise have the opportunity to experience. My own daughter is an athlete. When she was little, I would take her sister to soccer practice, and one day she said, Daddy, why can't Sammy play soccer? I didn't know what to say, so I said, because we're going to go get some toys at Target and get some lunch. So I told her teacher about it, and she said, well, why don't you put her in Special Olympics? I have no idea why I hadn't thought of that, because I was already helping raise money for Special Olympics. But once I got my own daughter in it and I saw the difference it made in her life, that joy she had of being able to compete and win something and do something on her own, and then what it did for us as a family, that networking that we got to have with the other parents of special needs children, and then what it does for us as police officers and community members to see what we're able to do to bring joy to people. And, you know, it's easy to get jaded in this line of work sometimes, but when you go out and you do this fundraising and you see how kind people are, it kind of keeps you grounded. So I try to bring that to all of the new officers and let them know, this is something you need to do. It's a good thing to do. It helps others, and that's what we as police officers are about. But also, it brings us good mental health, and especially at a time where that's more difficult. It's a great opportunity. And so I think that the idea behind this Flame of Hope Award, which they give out once a year, was that it's for a person that is trying to spread that word. And I was, like I said, I was fortunate enough to be put in a place, in a community, where that wasn't difficult to do. And again, with all of the good people I work with, and I'm blessed to be friends with and work with, and blessed to work in such a nice community, it's been really not a difficult thing, but very enjoyable, and hopefully we can continue it for a long time. I think that the future of that for the city and for the department looks very bright, because the people that are involved in it now, that are younger than me, are doing a phenomenal job. In fact, when Sergeant Jardine came on board, he more than doubled how much money we were raising each year. And it's still not enough for him. So, and that's great. So I'm very excited about that and very appreciative, very humbled by all of it. It was a complete surprise to me. It was one of the best kept secrets. I mean, half the department knew. I had no idea. And then I was surprised, too. My wife told me she was going into the office that day, and when I got called up, she came in and she was right there. And this was down in Bloomington, so I was a little surprised. So it was a cool experience, and that's it. You have any questions?
I would note, in 2023, the Geneva Police Department raised $46,387.
The highest we've ever raised.
Highest ever, so that's pretty impressive.
Thank you.
Yeah, congrats, and thank you so much for sharing. I loved the personal story. That was fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for new business? No, you're done.
Yeah, I know. Talkative tonight. Well, it's been so long since we've had a meeting, so getting caught up. I just wanted to mention the... Those of you that... I know that the mayor and I were at the NIPA meeting last Tuesday night, and I know a number of you probably joined the Zoom for that presentation by the representatives of the three communities that were holding their regular monthly meeting, and as well as a number of citizens from Batavia that also attended. And if you haven't had an opportunity to see that Zoom presentation, I would highly recommend it. And maybe we might want to consider holding a similar meeting when their NIPA committee meeting cycles to the various communities. And I think, I don't know if Geneva would be next, or if it'll be in Rochelle, but I think that... I think with all that's going on with the state legislature and a lot of the things as it relates to coal and the discussions surrounding it, it might be helpful to provide that opportunity to our community here in Geneva to attend a meeting. And not necessarily to have the same presentation, but maybe at least make the meeting and announcement public, and that if anybody from the public would want to attend, that they could and ask questions as well, so.
Great, thanks. I did watch the meeting, and I would recommend it to all of you. It's on Batavia's YouTube channel. And Mayor Burns, I'm sure you know, where is... Where are the monthly NIPA meetings? They rotate through the three communities.
They do.
Where are the ones in Geneva? Are they held here?
No, they're held at Public Works.
Okay.
Yeah, in the training room.
And are those open to... They're open to the public?
Yeah, all meetings at NIPA are open to the public.
Right, okay.
Abide by the same open meetings or, excuse me, rules that we do.
Right, okay, great.
Conference room, excuse me.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.